Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 20th meeting of the City Ballot and Planning Commission. I'd like to ask everyone to silence electronic devices, if you've got them, laptop or cellphone, please, at this time, and we'll get going. Heather, will you please call the roll?
Ali Taishi?
Here.
Mike Estes?
Here.
Lisa Anderson?
Here.
Steve Crooks?
Here.
Iris Motta Gibson?
Here.
Phyllis McKee?
Here.
Garrett O'Brien?
Here.
Thank you. Everyone's here. We have... What's that? The minutes? Yeah, we have not received those minutes, so there is a minutes noted, but we don't have any minutes to review our proofs. We'll do this in the next meeting. And so, our meeting tonight is on interim housing, but before we get into the topic, it's a work session, so it's not a public hearing, it's an opportunity for staff to introduce the topic. But before we get into that, we always have a public comment opportunity for other topics, so not the topic of tonight's meeting. If you want to talk about tonight's topic, we will give you an opportunity to do that after the staff presentation, but this is just an open session where if you want to share your thoughts for three minutes about something, anything at all, you're more than welcome to. So would anybody like to come up and share their thoughts on any topic? No? Okay, I'm seeing nobody, so we will close that, and we'll just move right into our work session. And so, like I mentioned, tonight's work session is on interim... It's a little bit misleading topic. Interim housing for the homeless, but it's really permanent facilities, not interim facilities, permanent facilities. So I think there's going to be a staff presentation. We'll turn it over to Rick Seppler, planning directors here, and then, Rick, you can introduce staff, and are you going to do a presentation to start? Take us away?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. Thank you for the opportunity to join you this evening. I'm joined by Lisa Poole, Senior Planner, and Samuel Lutz, Housing and Services Program Manager. Tonight, we come before you to discuss approaches, and again, it is somewhat confusing, permanent facilities that provide temporary housing for individuals who are unsheltered. And we'll be going to that in a minute, but first, I'd like to just take a moment to clarify something that seems to be virtually viral regarding consideration of the short-term temporary encampment regulations this Monday. I want to make sure everyone is clear, we were contacted by both paper and radio station, that there is no city proposal, or no proposal by any individual or group, to establish a 300-person tent encampment on Lincoln Street next to the car wash and gas station. We think we would know if they were going to do that, but this is just something that got out there and has taken a life of its own, so I know these are televised, let's get the message out that is really not a reason to attend Monday's hearing. We ask you to attend Monday's hearing of council on the temporary encampment regulations on the merits, not in response to false facts.
Thank you, Rick.
That being said, we come before you tonight, and I'll kind of try to set the universe of what we're working on. The first is, and you'll note on the far left, and that's what I mentioned, that's the temporary encampment regulations. That deals with tents and existing buildings and has been adopted. That is our current rules structure that's in place. It was adopted as an interim or emergency measure because the city had an absence of rules to review applications to accommodate that. Under those rules, a permit was issued for the Lighthouse Mission to operate a temporary encampment in an existing building. That permit is under appeal and will be considered by the Hearing Examiner later in November. There's no point in discussing that specific application this evening because it has its own process to move forward. What we're before the council this Monday will be the temporary encampment regulations that are permanent. In essence, the emergency would go away should these be adopted, and these would become the rules we would use into the future. And this body is very familiar with them because you recommended their approval and provided a planning commission recommendation to the city council. They would accommodate tents, encampments in existing buildings, safe parking areas, and tiny homes. Again, this does not propose the establishment of any of these approaches to address those who are unsheltered, but merely provides a regulatory framework so that applications could be reviewed with certainty for those who are interested in establishing them. That public hearing will be before the city council on the 24th, and that's this coming Monday. Tonight, we come before you for the other part. While the temporary encampment regulations are dealing with time-limited uses, these are emergency measures we wish to get in place because we're not able to accommodate folks at this point. Our long-term commitment is to build housing for people, and though if we are absent that, we need some stopgap interim measure. That's what those are. However, we acknowledge that the challenge before us to house all members of our community will be great, and it will take time for us to be able to fully facilitate that. As such, there might be a need to have facilities that exist a little longer and go as long as the need is there, beyond that established for those temporary uses. And in some of those facilities, they may be bricks and mortar, established and operate with no end date, largely to accommodate the fact that we've always had an unsheltered population in Washington State and in Bellingham, and there's a need for such facilities. Towards that end, we come before you tonight to introduce interim housing regulations that would establish citywide standards and a review process. And our purpose tonight is to give you the general approach we wish to provide for this measure so that we can get your input, as well as many comments from members of the community, and go back and prepare a more detailed ordinance for your consideration, research any issues that you direct us to do so, come back with reference or other materials you need to be able to craft those permanent regulations. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Poole, who's going to sort of set the stage in terms of our regulatory context in addressing this issue.
Thank you.
Good evening, Lisa Poole, Senior Planner. So as Rick said, you kind of alluded to the name of it, yes, before, this was called long-term shelters or longer-term shelters in your other work sessions, and since then it's been broadened to be called interim housing. And how we're defining that is a facility of longer operational duration than temporary shelters, with that public hearings on Monday at city council, and this would be in a building or other permanent structure with overnight sleeping accommodations. And it would provide housing for those who are homeless on entry, whether in general or for specific populations such as youth, those with mental challenges, families with young children, or seniors. These guests may use the facility on a nightly, monthly, or multiple-month basis, and they include a sponsor or managing agency. And this is similar to the temporary shelter ordinance in that this must be a religious organization, a nonprofit agency, or governmental entity. So the purpose of the regulations is to implement city policies and goals related to housing and homelessness, and I'll get into some of those on the next few slides, to facilitate smaller interim housing facilities throughout the community and larger facilities in appropriate areas such as industrial zones, and then to protect the health and safety of guests and the broader community. And that would be through a set of requirements and standards similar to the temporary shelter ordinance, which would include a code of conduct, an operations plan, and compliance with Waukam County Health Department regulations and other city and county regulations. So some of our supporting plans and policies, of course, included the city's comprehensive plan, which went through the body and was recommended, and so you're familiar with some of these policies, which include allowing shelters outright in industrial zones and conditionally commercial zones. Also, to continue to encourage and support the development of housing with appropriate services for the homeless throughout the city and county, and then to expand the city's supply of interim housing for target populations. We also have the city's consolidated plan, which is a requirement per the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for communities that receive federal block grants, and a few of the supporting priorities are listed here. That includes support emergency shelters in safe, permanent locations, prioritize housing and services to special needs populations, and support programs that prevent chronic homelessness. Also, the top service priority in the plan is for those with mental and behavioral health needs, and more than half of those experiencing homelessness in the community report this as an issue.
I'd like to take it up at this point. I'd like to start off with a clarification, and that is, we need to acknowledge the breadth of the members of our community who are unsheltered. If folks think that the sole population is driving by the front of the drop-in center, and that characterizes all who are in shelter in our community, you're unfortunately misinformed. There is a significant breadth of individuals who are touched by this. It could be those who've lost a job, or through illness have become displaced, or are unable to find a place to live, who are a very light touch, and that spectrum can range from those that just need accommodations and connection to resolve that issue, straight on through to the most complex individuals who need a low-barrier shelter. In nothing we're talking about today do we see a one-size-fits-all solution. We believe there needs to be a range of different approaches to accommodate the breadth of the people who we need to serve in our community. That being said, we acknowledge that, in any case, putting too many of similar facilities together creates an unintended consequence on neighborhood, could overwhelm it in terms of population, and we're looking to establish caps or dispersion requirements for similar-type uses to avoid that sort of cumulative impact that might occur in a neighborhood over time. We're considering that, looking at our existing facilities, and we're considering our needs, too. While some of the lighter-touch individuals, that's not really an issue, one wouldn't even know of the problem unless one was aware of it, there are other populations that are much more complex that could have significant issues in terms of that neighborhood or area. We want to be very careful about avoiding the nonconformity for existing facilities. We have a number of facilities that are operating successfully to address all or portions of this population throughout our neighborhoods, and we wouldn't want to craft rules that inadvertently limited their ability to continue the good work they do. We want to create a rational basis for allowing this use in those residential areas, based on other models we have of what, for example, state law allows. Group homes are allowed, for example, in residential areas. And we believe with the right kind of structure, facilities that deal with the appropriate population for residential, these could work just fine. We want to avoid inadvertent empowerment for those to use these rules for private gain. In essence, we need to make sure that the rules apply to the class we're creating of those who are unsheltered, but not what are applied to someone who is looking to make funding or commercial revenue on housing. We also want to be careful in the sense that if we're creating a new class that we wish to consider, we want to make sure that it doesn't have an effect on family definition or boarding and rooming house. We'll come back and address those at another time, but we believe with the right efficacy and case management and match of intensity of individuals to the specific solution, it would be like a group home or other adult facility which exists in residential areas and could be managed with limited or no impacts, and would not be subject to those regulations. So our approach would be to consider three kind of tiers of three strategies that are based on size. The first is to allow the smaller interim housing with administrative approval in all zoning districts. These smaller interim housing could include up to 10 adult guests, and that would have limitations that are provided on the amount of size for the place they're proposed to be used for this, to house these individuals, as well as the fact that this isn't the line-up in front and seek-every-evening accommodations. These are folks who are placed from an organization into a facility that has a management plan or onsite staff who can exist in the environment successfully. The second would be a mid-range, and that is to address, with administrative approval in multifamily, commercial, or in village and industrial zones, those with 11 to 40 guests. So again, the more intensive areas we have in our zoning, we could have a more intensive use, again, with the same requirement for management plan, staffing, and to ensure that the folks using the facility are a match to the facility that's being proposed. We're considering the largest, more than 40, with conditional use permit in multifamily, commercial, and urban village zones, and administratively in industrial. And you might recall, we just saw the slide that came back up about the comp plan policy. We agreed as a community that larger facilities in industrial areas should be established by right, so they have a place to go without the uphill concerns that often are faced to establish such facilities. That was the best place, we thought, in the community to provide a guarantee for the use. So we'll take a couple of examples of that to sort of further our thoughts on this. The first is, can a single-family home in a single-family zone be used as interim housing? And the answer would be yes. It would be up to 10 adult guests with a type-1 permit. Type-1 is administrative approval. 11 to 40 with a CUP. Over 40 adult guests would not be allowed in that zone. That's just, the scale of it is just too large to even be accommodated, and I couldn't imagine a site where you could make the next requirement work. Folks often ask, why is 250 square feet listed? And the reason is, is that if folks are to function as a living unit, there needs to be room for them to eat, to sit, to work, to recreate, to live together, and we need to make sure we have facilities that are large enough. This is not about warehousing people. This is about providing a reasoned location to accommodate folks, and do that until such time as more permanent housing becomes available. And guests would be referred from off-site. So in essence, again, wouldn't be queuing at the door, wouldn't be a nightly issue about whether you could be in or not. Intake is done remotely. Folks are assessed whether this is a good fit for them, whether they could work in that environment. There is a management plan for the building, as well as perhaps onsite, or for those visiting the site daily, checking it out depending on the level of intensity, and it could be made to work. The second is, could a multifamily building in a multifamily zone be used as interim housing? And the answer is yes. Up to 40 adult guests with type-1 permit. Again, the same requirements there. This is by referral. This is not direct intake. Again, matching folks who would be successful in this environment. Over 40 guests would have a conditional use permit. Again, just because of the nature and size of having folks in one facility, impacts become a little greater, and we want to have the ability to deal with the issues from the neighborhood. The same square footage applies. We're not warehousing people. We need folks to have a place where they can live successfully until such time as more permanent housing is identified, and as I mentioned, they'd be referred from off-site. The next one is, can a building in a commercial, industrial, or urban village zone be used as interim housing? And the answer is yes. Up to 40 adult guests with an administrative permit, up to 40 adult guests with a type-1 permit in industrial zones, over 40 adult guests with a CUP, a conditional use permit in commercial and urban village zones, no more than one adult bed per 35 square feet. The nature of these facilities tend to change as the size goes up. This is a different, providing a nod to the more complex individuals, and probably more intensive case management, as well as staffing that would be required to make that work. These would be the ones that would not be subject to off-site referral, hence the varying degrees of approval and requirements for it. So that would be our proposal as a regulatory framework, and we're obviously looking for your input and thoughts on this. We would, if we're getting good direction from, as we always do, from the planning commission, we would take that direction and craft it into a more robust proposal that could be evaluated very specifically and bring it back to another workshop session so you can consider it. And then, of course, after you consider it, you likely would, if you believe it to have merit, would schedule a public hearing. We would then have a public hearing. After your consideration of comments received, you would forward a recommendation to the council, who would have their own public hearing and likely work sessions on it. So I think it's fair to say we're at the beginning of the process to develop it. We have a construct we'd like your feedback on, and we're anxious to hear members of the community who are here tonight and their thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will have an opportunity to ask questions of staff and discuss this topic, but I think we should take public comment first. And there's a sign-up sheet. One person signed up, but you don't have to sign up to speak, and if you signed up accidentally because you thought it was just a sign-in sheet and you don't want to speak, you don't have to speak. That happens, too. And so this is, like Rick just said, there's going to be multiple opportunities to participate in this process. You could speak tonight. And just to clarify what you just said, the intent would be that we would come from today's work session to drafting a, preparing a draft ordinance and going straight to a public hearing, and then follow on work sessions, or the other way around? Have another work session, then?
It depends on the commission's disposition of this. If you feel that the structure seems to have some merit, you'd want to see more details, of course. We could come to a work session. If you feel that it might be useful to get a proposal there, go to a work session, then roll up your sleeves to address it, whatever is best on this. We think while there is urgency to get these rules in place because there's significant need in our community, we also think we need to be thoughtful about how we craft them. So we're trying to balance those. It's your prerogative, based on what you hear and our discussion tonight.
Great. So for the public, there will be additional opportunities at work sessions. We always try and take comment, and then the public hearing is where the actual kind of draft rules are presented, and the entire evening is devoted to hearing from the public. And then we absorb that comment and go have another work session typically, unless nobody speaks, which has happened also. So with that, I'd like to open it up for comment. If there's anybody here who would like to comment, you can come up to the mic. You need to state your name and address. We'll give you four minutes to share your thoughts. Is there anybody who would like to comment? Yes, come on down.
I don't know if it's signed up.
Well, oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I should say, Mike signed up.
No, I don't wish to comment.
Yeah.
I do, I crossed my name out, but I thought it was a sign-up sheet.
But you'd like to comment?
I'd like to comment.
You're more than welcome to comment, yeah. So, and it looks like it's Bridget.
Yes.
Yeah. Bridget can go second.
Do I need a mic?
Yeah. And I'll give you a heads up when you've got about 30 seconds left.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Emily O'Connor. I am the Executive Director of Lydia Place, and I am here tonight in support of this effort. I know it's in its early stages, but I have no doubt that with all these great brains in the room, we can come up with the best possible option from where we are today. I don't know that it will be, I'm sure that it won't be perfect, and I know that there will be bumps, but I do think that we are at a place where we need to be really creative in how we move forward. And to Director Seppler's point earlier, that this isn't a one-size-fits-all, we do tend to get sort of a idea in the general public about the person who is homeless, and we know that that is a really complex population. So it is still true that about 1 in 4 individuals experiencing homelessness in Waukam County are children under the age of 18. Some of us in this room were at a system meeting this week, and our school district liaison was sharing that some of her frustration, she has two kids that she, two high school kids that she's working with who are on the street, and she was able to provide them with tents and food, but couldn't direct them where they could go to set up their tents. And those are, I mean, these are kids trying to go to high school every day, and I don't know if you know what it's like outside right now, but it's nowhere near as nice as it is in this room. And I think that it's easy to forget sometimes what the impact is, but that's the reality. And things like this could benefit all across the whole spectrum of people who are struggling with homelessness and housing insecurity. And I think that as a community, it's time for us to really figure out how to do a better job. And I think, I fully believe that we can do that, but it's going to take a little bit of leaping in to the challenging situations, and that means that individuals like me who are, have a life full of privilege and comfort, need to give a little. And so I'm willing to do that. I think most of us are willing to do that, if that means we can, you know, look in the faces of our children and say we've done everything we can to create a community where everybody has an opportunity to be safe and to thrive. And these types of creative solutions, I think, will get us a little bit further toward being able to do that. So I know there's a lot of work yet to go on this particular issue, but you have the support of a lot of us out there. I know there's only a few of us in here at the moment, but there are a lot of us out there who are working day in and out, day out, with individuals who are struggling, and would love to see some creative solutions like this on the ground, so that we can more quickly respond to opportunities and creative partnerships that get more spaces to get individuals and high school kids off the streets and into a safe place to be able to move forward. The consequence, of course, right, like even taking these two kids who are right now trying to make the best they can out of their life and get through high school, if we ignore them, which is what we're basically doing when we say, here's a tent, we have nowhere for you to go, and even if we had a place to send them with their tent, that would not be a good option, right? That's not good enough. We should not be happy with that. But even if we were able to do that, when we ignore this opportunity now to give them the support that they need, you can be assured that we will continue in the service community to figure out how to serve them for the next 50 years as they struggle in and out of the things that they are experiencing. So taking that opportunity is really, really important, no matter where we have the nexus to do that. So anyway, I think I'm probably up on my four minutes, but thank you very much, and good luck, and just know you've got support out there for these creative efforts. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, Bridget.
Thanks. Bridget with the Lighthouse Mission. I came a few weeks back and shared a little bit about some updates regarding the drop-in center and that sort of thing, and so we also stand in support of these efforts to create this, what's it called? The permanent facilities that provide interim housing ordinance. And so we want to thank you already for the efforts that have gone into it and the thought process there, and just wanted to also just echo a bit of what Emily just talked about regarding the paradigm that oftentimes in the public and the community that we have regarding who is homeless. And I think one of the things that I wanted to specifically highlight through what was just shared in the PowerPoint was kind of those creatively addressing the needs of the vulnerable specialized populations in our community. And so some of them definitely being youth in our community, and then others being maybe specialized or smaller shelters that would serve people that are medically fragile, or people that are elderly that are being discharged from the hospital in need of a place. And so there's these populations within our community that can very easily fall through the cracks, and just speaking from experience at the mission, it is often that we have people that are discharged from the hospital that don't have anywhere necessarily, like a home to go back to. They don't need to necessarily be in the hospital anymore, and it makes sense that they're discharged in that sense, but heading back out, there's not a really place to recover. And maybe it's not so much that they're going to recover even in two weeks. Maybe it'll take a bit longer. And so having a place that people could go that are dealing with some medical issues, or people that are elderly that need some more assisted care, and for us to be able to more fluidly kind of develop those programs or those shelters that would serve those populations that are in such high need that currently, like for instance, if somebody, oftentimes, we talk about how the end of the road often is the hospital or the drop-in center, especially on the evenings and weekends when many other places are closed, and people that show up in those two places, it's just tough for those folks. And so something like this, as it's gone through, and there's opportunity for maybe smaller shelters in different areas, and there's different zoning, and it, I am encouraged by those efforts and encouraged by the fact that whether it's the mission or other agencies that take it upon themselves to that take it upon themselves to serve people throughout our community using that, I think it'll be really good. So thank you so much for your help in this way and for your continued efforts on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Okay. So thank you for both commenting. And with that, we will close the opportunity for comment at this work session, and we'll move into kind of questions and discussion. And is there anybody who'd like to kick us off? Questions for staff or anything? Phyllis?
Are there other communities that have tried this or put into place these suggestions that we have? So do we have a model to look at and whether it's been successful or not? Or are we just creating the wheel first time?
I would say this approach is based on our assessment of a number of communities. We're looking at the ones that obviously fell on the successful side. We are trying to do the best blend to deal with the unique circumstances we have here. But every aspect that's proposed for you has been successfully accomplished elsewhere, but perhaps not in this combination because it is very tailored to our zoning and to our city.
Just to carry on with that, was there anything you discovered that was done that other communities have abandoned that we are now staying clear of? I mean, was there something that sounded very attractive at first and then you avoided it?
There are a number in terms of the shorter term that we have considered and rejected because of experiences elsewhere.
Good, thank you.
But in terms of the longer term, what I would say would be to try to, it's dealing with the breadth of our population warrants a different approach than we've seen elsewhere. In some cases, larger facilities are encouraged. We're increasingly becoming aware it's difficult to cite those facilities and that they, in many ways, don't provide the breadth of services and environment to deal with everything we're presented. So that's why we're trying to find the blend.
Thank you.
Lisa?
I've got a lot, but in some ways it's so little, there's just little pieces that I'd like clarification. But first, before I delve into the first couple of subjects, I, as I read through this multiple times, I kept thinking about how a majority of cities warehouse people who don't have homes. And I think about how when you cluster lots of people together, it is not good for their health, physical, mental well-being. And so I was weighing back and forth efficiency of, you know, dollars spent and how do we help the most people and with the cost of house pricing, prices, how do we go to a smaller model? But I kept cycling back to that I think it's an innovative approach, and I really appreciate it because I do think we need to disperse our members, all various members of our community throughout each neighborhood. And so having the smaller homes where we can work with specialized population like elderly and disabled and people with mental health issues and families, I think that can help them become more, feel more integrated in the community. And so I do like a lot of components of this plan. And I do like the fact that we're not looking at just citing large facilities, but it is an, you know, there is the opportunity for that. So overall, I'm pretty supportive, but would really like to make sure that the intent of what you're trying to create can be fulfilled and not abused by some of the concerns that could come up. So one of the areas that I would like focus on is the dispersion because I think of the cost of housing. And if the intent is to have people transition into all areas of our community, there are places that are more affordable to do that and others. And so I think some neighborhoods could possibly bear more of some of the impacts that could happen, especially if we're looking at facilities up to 40 in a single-family neighborhood. I would like to see, I know that some of the aspects of this plan as far as being nonprofit or religious affiliated intake at a separate location versus at the door are strong indicators to prevent some of the concerns I think people would have. The type one process for the smaller facilities, I can completely understand that because we do want to eliminate some of the barriers for some of the smaller facilities. But is there any way that we could write into it that the adjacent neighbors would be aware of what, what kind of facility is going to be their neighbor property? Because it's, you know, it's an administrative decision, but, and I think of when we dealt with the short-term rental, you know, as far as if something, you know, if an agency bought the house next to me and converted it into a youth shelter and I saw people transitioning weekly different faces and living, you know, perhaps 10, maybe more based on the square footage of the house, you don't need me calling saying, I think there's something going on with this house next to me. And the courtesy of them being able to have a contact number, and not just for concerns, but I also think it's just a good neighborly. I know if some of these great agencies in our community bought a house next to me and was transitioning families to help stabilize their home, I would like to know that so that I can maybe provide support as a neighbor. Just little things that you can do from making cookies to bring in, you know, children's toys over. So I think it's just a good way to be able to integrate into a community. So just a little bit of that. I have more, but I don't want to monopolize all the time so I can yield and come back.
Well, we can jump around. Yeah, and I'd like, we should get, we should get questions out too. If anybody has clarifying questions or things like that, and then dig into the topics that you're raising, which I'm sure other people have commented on. Steve?
Thank you. My questions will go to the small, single-family zone. You showed that 200 square foot will accommodate one adult. When I look at some of the small or regular-sized homes in our city, you could be talking about a 2,500 square foot house, three or four bedrooms. Part of the permitting process, how would you require alteration of the interior of a house like that to accommodate 10 adults?
Well, our approach would be if a property was identified, there'd be a set of standards that would need to be met. The agency that is operating the facility would do a management plan. It's clear that not all facilities will work for all individuals, meaning that it may be some that a specific floor plan or house would have limitations. That agency or group would need to ensure that the folks who are residing together are compatible and can live in a compatible environment. And that might be a natural limitation. So again, it may not be every house will work for it, and it may not be that the max number of folks are achieved in every house, but we would look to get guidance. We want a high assurance that any of these facilities, when established, folks can, can live together harmoniously, you know, and that the space that's been allocated reduces friction. And we're looking for expertise for that.
If the acquiring agent, agency, how would you treat ownership? Do they have to have it in fee? Would they have to have it in such, so many year lease? How would that work?
It's a good, it's a good point. For the period of operation, based on the approval, they would need to have a leasehold. And if the leasehold was, at the very minimum, and if the leasehold was extinguished, they would not be able to continue the operation. If they own it, then it would be continuing pending they keep current with the requirements of whatever permit is issued.
Can I ask a clarifying question on your, on your first one?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, the 250 square feet, that doesn't mean each individual gets their own exclusive 250 square feet. That's just a total size. So you could put two bunk beds in one room and put four people in a bedroom, as long as the house had 1,000 square feet, right? Is that the?
You're correct. And we're relying on those who are sponsoring the facility, the house, to figure that one out and realize there's a limited, there's a carrying capacity.
Sure. So to Steve's point, you know, you, you might not have to retro the house at all. If you had two big bedrooms, you could put eight people in them comfortably and the house is big enough, you know?
In theory.
In theory, you know?
It may be a family just living in the house.
Yeah, it could be a family.
You know, and just like every family on that block. And that's what we want to underscore. It's not going to be, it may not be all individuals. It may be a family with children. This is a good placement if it works for them. We rely on our partners who are going to provide it to come forward with a detailed plan of how this specific facility could accommodate it. And they'll, they'll suss it out. They'll have to figure out what could be accommodated reasonably to, to let folks live, again, harmoniously together. And that's always a challenge. So a lot of that casework or management or oversight will have to ensure that can happen.
Thanks.
Yeah, I support one of the comments of Lisa. I would certainly think that you should get neighborhood feedback for any intentions to issue a permit for interim housing in a single-family zone.
I think Sammy's got a few points which would help broaden that.
Hi, my name is Samuel Lutz. I'm the Housing and Services Program Manager for this city, and I administer the housing levy as well as the federal home funds and community development block grant funds that come through the city. So all told, that's about four and a half million a year that goes through us. And a lot of the agencies, Lydia Place that just spoke, as well as Northwest Youth Services, Sun Community Services and others, already operate these types of things. And when they get funding from us, whether it's for acquisition, for rehabilitation, and then sometimes for ongoing services, we do already require a management plan. So one of the thoughts with this was that we sort of use our current programs review process to look at those management plans. And they typically would have a good neighbor policy, and they typically, well, we would always require housing quality standards to be met if we put funding in a project for acquisition or rehabilitation. So some of those things that are already in place and we already have folks who focus on that could sort of overlap with this kind of a program where it to go forward.
Okay, let me jump around a little bit and then I'll come back.
Let's see. I'd love to also see some clarity on the goal of dispersion. I think I bet a lot of us would love to see some more of that. I was just reading the Seattle U's, their homeless advocacy recommendations in one of their packets, and they talked a lot about specificity and clarity of goals. And I think that was an area of, of these goals where I was really pleased with the three strategies and how specific they were and measurable and I think clear for the public. But I found that the dispersion standards stuck out to me as, I would love to see some more on that. I think I probably have a different intent when I thought, when I heard dispersion or when I read dispersion than, than Lisa may have been mentioning in that, in looking at the maps of multifamily housing in Bellingham, there are neighborhoods that already have so much multifamily housing and so much density and so many neighborhoods that have very little. And I hope that we don't go with some, with a cookie cutter solution that would create an increasing burden on our lower-income neighborhoods and would rather, much rather see and ensure that our, that these housing options are going into every neighborhood. Like so many folks have pointed out, the people who are going to be living in these shelters are already our neighbors. 70% of the people who are unsheltered at one point lived in a house in Bellingham, and so they already are our neighbors. They're our children's classmates, they're our coworkers, and they absolutely have the right to live in every neighborhood in Bellingham, just as any of us do. And in that same stroke, I'd love to see, I am interested in this conversation around a management plan versus the policy in terms of the type of permit. And I would much rather see a management plan than putting into code a different type of permit that would require neighbor notification or, and certainly not neighbor feedback. I think that we have some wonderful examples within our community of all of our shelter providers being in many neighborhoods, being great neighbors, having really positive experiences and doing so. I'd love to hear maybe a little bit of feedback of that seems to work really well. And I don't know if it's because that, I know that Lydia Place has gone through a lot of processes and a lot of conversations with neighbors to make that happen, but I'm not sure what the legal framework is right now. And it seems like it's working well, and I'd love to see it be made even easier with something more positively intended, like a management and sort of more of a neighborhood, I think you called it a good neighborly management plan, versus making the actual permitting process any more rigorous than it needs to be.
If I could, just on the dispersion issue, it's not the intent for whatever standards we present to you, and we're working on to the, like, developing them right now, to just say by the nature of folks being unsheltered, we need to separate them. That, that's not what this is about. What this is about is if you, I think we agree that there's a continuum of intensity with folks who tend to be unsheltered. And the ones who are the most complex, putting all the folks who are the most complex in our community in one neighborhood is the issue. So it's the degree of complexity. If there's less complexity and, and less intensity of issues, it's probably not that big of a deal where folks are located. But once the intensity rises to the point of being measurable because there are associated activities that occur in the immediate area, and if it's compounded, we can run it to a circumstance that would be unwanted by that neighborhood and community, have an adverse effect. So we're trying to approach it based on the intensity of the use in a way and the complexity of the use as really a guide for us. So it might be the type of facility and where it's located, not just because it's a interim housing facility.
Thank you. Mike and then Lisa?
My first question, I think, is something Iris is getting to, is what, what does it look like right now to hypothetically permit something like Lydia Place in a, in a neighborhood, a single-family neighborhood?
One of the things that are challenging is that we have a number of facilities that are existing. Each of their provenance tends to be a little different because our zoning is so unique on area by area. In a sense, we would look and find what is similar to that use that's allowed within the, the zoning area that's to be located and see if we can find that the proposal would be consistent with it. There is a long-term trend, and you've, you've heard it from before, to go more towards a clear use-based approach because it eliminates the ambiguity of whether something's allowed or not. And it eliminates the need to have an interpretation whether it's there or not. And that's what we're proposing, to try to go and do it. Because right now, I think we could, we have provisions for confidential shelters, for example, that are allowed, and, and they have their own track in our municipal code throughout the city. We could probably permit many of the uses that are proposed now in most of our residential areas, but it would be using analogous uses and trying to come to a conclusion that it would work. And let's be candid, these uses and these kind of facilities are often challenged. And if you don't have a clear demarcation of what's allowed, you run the risk of a challenge being successful and a use being extinguished. Again, one of our pending appeals is basically asserting that we don't have a clear definition of the allowed use and the code didn't provide it, and we erred in our interpretation of the code to try to make it fit. So our entire approach for all the ordinances we bring for you, before you, from, from about... from about three years ago to date is to be very clear about where things are allowed to avoid that exposure.
Thank you. I, I am, I actually did some research on that specific question. I think I could provide a more direct answer to that question for you.
That's good.
Because what you, what you suggested was that moving forward, we're going to try and formalize this use. But what we're asking about is what's happened in the past. And I believe that most of the facilities we're talking about, like Lydia Place that are functioning, have been around for a long time. They're probably non-conforming, most of them. You know, that's why we went through a conditional use permit or we went through a review specifically for Lydia Place to permit some changes in the zoning, I think last year. But I looked at what these uses are in the residential single and residential multi zones. And I, the uses that are most similar, there's medical care facility, which is like a place where you take care of older folks. Daycares, service care is what a group home falls under by definition. Day treatment center is where people get treatment for drug addicts, bed and breakfast. Those are all conditional uses in the residential single zone. And in the residential multi zone, the same is true. All of those I just listed, medical care, daycare, service care, day treatment, bed and breakfast, boarding and rooming houses, which are probably the most similar to what we're talking about, not even allowed in the residential single, conditional in the residential multi. And I'm not suggesting that's where I fall on this, but I'm just, facts out there. What we're talking about is pretty much conditional in the residential zones today. If you wanted to come in today and do that. I, that, is that fair to say?
We did research all of the facilities that had up to 20 beds in single family. And their providence is different because of when they were established. Most are done through interpretation rather than outright allowance. So you're not incorrect in that, you're correct.
If you came in on a vacant site today to do it, that's.
However, it's, it's arguable on some whether they are pre-existing legal, non-conforming. And quite frankly, why would we want to make them that in this community? So one of the provisions we've discussed to bring forward is to establish all those prior uses as legal conforming uses to clear away the fact that you'd have to go back to the providence and establishment. They're working, they've been in the community a long time. We need them to continue and not be constrained by a potential challenge.
And we can do that through language in, in the ordinance, correct?
That's our hope.
Outright make that.
I neglected to mention it, it's something we've discussed. But we wanted to focus more on the new facilities. But, but as you recall, one of our goals was not to adversely affect those that are established and make them pre-existing legal, non-conforming if they were legal or maintain that status if reasonably they could accommodate future uses into time. So we want to give them that provision. And we think we have a device that might allow that to occur.
Well, I think Lisa had one and then we'll go back over here.
So just to clarify, I think the dispersion, I think we're probably more similar than actually a part on that because I didn't want some of the lower income neighborhoods where property could be purchased a little cheaper to, I don't even, I don't like to think of the word as, you know, bear the burden because it's not a burden. But to, I, I think we need to be able to integrate people who are, you know, in temporary, you know, homeless or housing insecurity and, and all aspects of our neighborhoods regardless of the wealth of those locations. And I think it'll be harder to do than some. So I think being careful about dispersion. We don't want to necessarily limit opportunity if it's the only opportunity. But I do like your example of, you know, we wouldn't want a lot of housing that would have a certain service area to be clustered that may not create a healthy environment for those people transitioning. I hadn't thought about that, so I appreciate it. Kind of going back to the full-time, as far as approved management plan, just to clarify, who would be the individual approving a management plan for a location?
The management plan would be submitted, would be reviewed through our department and it would be part of the issuance of the permit. We'd have to clarify that that management plan met standards.
Will you be developing or providing an example of like a matrix of what you're looking for in order to provide approval so that we could?
Yeah, I think it's going to be similar to our short-term. Where we develop some basic standards of what we want to have disclosed. And they were performance standards, what we want to ensure were addressed. Should be fair to note that, again, diversity of the population. Some might not have onsite supervision 24/7. There's no need for case management. Some might. It depends on the population they serve. Was noted in testimony, those who are medically fragile, seniors, others, you might need somebody onsite to accommodate that use.
I would like to see if anybody else would support it. Some kind of outline or guiding principle for who would need, like what type of service area would need perhaps an onsite versus the management plan. And then maybe just a, like a list of this type of facility would minimumally have this and then something that might get a little bit more detailed for a higher need population, just so that we have an idea. Within the community, are they, so we'd have an ability to go and reference if there was a concern or to just know. And it sounds like there might be already a document available, but it would be nice if that could be emailed to us to be able to view.
Thank you, Iris.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. Were you, were you going to respond to that comment?
Just, I don't know that this would be the perfect model. But if you're interested in looking at what is already used as part of our, this is the Housing Development Guideline and Procedure Handbook. It's available on the website and I'm sure we can get you a link to it. And it does have a section on management and operations, including what we would typically look for in a management plan. It's not super detailed, it's just an overall outline. We certainly have examples of management plans as well.
I would appreciate that. I, I was looking for examples for other municipalities. And even though I Googled, it wasn't something that just right, you know, readily popped up.
Sorry, Iris.
That's all right. And pardon my misinterpretation of your intent, Lisa. Thank you for clarifying that. I was curious if any neighborhoods based on like a historical neighborhood designation would be exempt or if this would be a blanket to all Bellingham neighborhoods.
At this point, again, we're, we're working on our locational criteria, trying to come up with dispersion and intensity, those kind of measures that are applicable, meaning that we're not just being subjective of what we think more is, is more intense. We do have an inventory of where the current facilities are. We believe the need is great and we need to be uniform in its application. So if we say single-family zones, it's all single-family zones.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure what some of those special designations kind of, how, how strongly they superseded other things. I think that was my main question.
Karen, any comment, question?
Yeah, I just have a question. As we get to drafting more detailed standards and we're looking at larger shelters, is the staff considering any sort of design standards that would be applicable to the larger shelters, the 40-plus beds?
Yes. We have a number of standards we've gleaned from other communities. They range from having areas for outdoor congregation that's out of the public right-of-way, areas that are adequate in size for intake so folks don't need to queue. Talks about internal facilities and the number of restrooms for residents in a shelter. All of those are ones we would likely propose in this ordinance.
When you're talking with service providers, what do you think the most pressing need is right now for shelters?
I'm going to ask Samia to respond to that.
I wish that we could clone most of what we have right now. You know, I think I just heard that we have anywhere between 100 and 200 youth aged 18 to 24 waiting. I know folks with behavioral health needs, there's dire needs for that. SUN Community Services has a couple of facilities right now out there that work really well, cloning those. So I, you know, I don't know where I would start, but those are a couple.
I guess I'd ask you just as far as structures go. Is there a larger need for large facilities, small facilities? The most pressing need right now?
That's a difficult one to answer because it's, it's very specific to the agency and the type of services that they provide and what is both financially feasible for them and, and makes the most sense for their client base.
Okay, thanks.
Iris?
I'm curious from your conversations with service providers and I'd love to hear feedback from folks who are here or listening as well. It sounds like what we currently have is a lot of flexibility, which can be good, but it can be challenging when you have different organizations with different needs. And this seems like it's great in that it is so simple and clear. I wonder if it not only would provide a framework for new potential service providers as well as ensuring that it didn't compete with existing service providers and if it would at the same time make it easier for some of our existing service providers to expand. And if it meets, say, for some of our existing service writers, if folks are looking at this and saying, this meets our vision for if, if we plan to expand, this would meet our goals in doing so and make that easier.
Well, Samia, take a crack at that. But first, we did gather a number of our current providers and shared this approach because we wanted the feedback before it came before you. Largely, is this workable? We'd hate to advance something that would be great regulation that would never be implemented. We want to get things that are on the ground that would make a difference. And uniformly around that table, which was a snapshot of many of our providers who provide a great service to the community, they said, this gives us tools that we don't have now with certainty. And that's the big distinction. Right now, while at the end of the day, I think one could prevail on establishing some of the facilities that are permitted here, I think there is a risk too to come forward. Even facilities that have been out there in prior processes, when Lydia Place came forward for permitting, though folks represent, respect their work, there are folks in opposition. You know, and I think we're running into a point where we can't, as a community, we need to have certainty. This gives us certainty.
Thank you.
You, Lisa?
So throughout this proposal, it refers to adults, adult guests, you know, up to 10 and then up to 40. It doesn't address adults with dependents or children. Is there, is there a reason why that wasn't specified? Because when I'm thinking, you know, 250 square feet per adult and up to 10, I, I don't want to create a limitation where someone with two children wouldn't be able to find shelter in a location. But I kind of wonder if 10 adults and each had three children, you now have quite multiplied how many people are living within a facility. And then I also, you know, a three-bedroom house, four bunk beds, I would like to have some, either the agencies, if they've weighed into it and they don't think it's a concern, I'd like to know that or have that information shared. But, you know, I just think that, you know, it can, a contain, not a contained unit, but a separate, you know, like one family per bedroom or something so that you're not putting children in with non-family members. And I don't know if there's any guidelines or if you've received any input from agencies regarding that.
I think we both want to respond to that. But first, we exempted children purposely. Again, our intent is not to warehouse people because it will not work. A single-family home, just putting in the hypothetical 10 individuals, each having three children, it just wouldn't function. And we'd never approve that categorically because we can't imagine how that could function properly. We're relying on the blend of spaces with individuals and a general guideline that's moving forward to provide reasoned living accommodations for, it could be short duration or it could be a month or it could be more than a month going on. So we rely on the agencies to clearly demarcate how they would accommodate that. And that would be something we'd look for. Sammy, do you want to add to that?
So part of the housing quality standards piece for the small type things that we do right now, we use the Section 8 HUD guidelines for overcrowding and, and occupancy standards. And that's two people per room, not per bedroom, per room in a house. And then the other thing I want to mention is that we do have a domestic violence shelter currently operating in the city of Bellingham. That's a five-bedroom house. It's in a confidential location and it can house up to 21 people, including kids. And so when you have small kids enter the picture, it just can really vary. And these people may stay for a week, a month, you know, six months. But we didn't want to constrain it that way.
I had a question. When we talk about urban villages, are we talking about the entire urban village or just the commercial zone designations in the urban village?
No, it would be the urban village zone.
Okay.
There are different designations within, within the zone, but this is the whole village.
So if you were in an RT, like a residential designation, you would still have the, the idea would be that the commercial standards, not the commercial, the, yeah, the, the commercial urban village industrial standards would apply. For example, you could do, if you were in, on Peabody, which is a res, single-family residential street, you wouldn't need to provide notice for, or get a conditional use for a facility up to 40 people.
Wait a minute. So no, I mean, if there's an urban village zone, regardless of the designation within the zone.
Yeah.
So Peabody, I'm not sure.
It's, it's within a residential transition designation.
Is it the fountain urban village?
Yeah.
Then it would be subject to the urban village requirements.
Okay. Iris?
I'm curious, I've been excited to read about LA. This past week opened 15 shelters across the city. And it was a strong movement by the city. And, and I've been interested to read about it. And I'm curious, I wasn't able to find anywhere if any of those shelters were in single-family neighborhoods. And if we would ever consider strategy two, the mid-range interim housing in allowing that into single-family neighborhoods. We already have, it seems like a model that's, and some of ours are very close to that in terms of the number of people being served.
So you're asking about the 11 to 40?
Yes.
It is, it is proposed to be allowed in single-family with a conditional use permit. If you look on page two or page seven of the packet at the top. So up to 10 would be with the type one, the administrative.
Oh, I see.
Single-family. And then 11 to 40 would be a conditional use permit in single-family.
I should also note that there's a trend. Tacoma recently adopted new regulations to allow for broader location by right of smaller shelters. What we're all finding is that if we don't have areas that are identified by right, things don't get established. Unfortunately, it becomes political and politically just bogs the machinery down. There's just not the political will to overcome the issues associated with it. We believe that we need to balance the concerns that were voiced on facilities with the population and location. And we're trying to find that blend that says, this is reasonable. A use like this, a group home could be established here. However, group homes are conditional use. This would be by right.
Lisa?
A little bit what you had brought up. I was thinking a lot about the urban villages too, the residential transition. And being familiar with a couple of the urban villages and where those transition zones are, a budding right up against sometimes narrow streets. When I think of Otis and not always developed sidewalks. And then you have homes on the other side. And to think that you could go up to a 40 individual. Not that I'm against it, but I'm concerned about what type of design standards would be required to make sure that the impact could be lessened onto that, you know, budding, single-family neighborhood. Because, you know, not concerned about the 10, a little bit more concerned about a larger facility. So if it's possible to provide maybe an idea of where those transition zones are in the city so that we can as a body look to see if we're comfortable with that fit or if we'd like to make some. we'd like to make some suggestions on maybe some standards, especially for things that would be new-built.
Would, would a facility that housed that many people be subject to design review, like multifamily design review, if it was new construction?
To be candid, we haven't progressed the discussion that far.
Gotcha.
You know, we're still at, I think you'd appreciate, you sort of get a structure, then you want to come see this body and say, does this seem like a workable structure before you spend the time to really suss out the specific details for each of those categories. But, and that's going to be a question I'll ask on point, you know, of the commission at the end of the evening, should we proceed with the structure as proposed with your comments in mind to develop it out more fully?
Well, I'd like to echo comments made by nearly everyone about the importance of this. And the, one of the main things I was going to ask about, which already got covered, was the dispersion commentary and kind of agree with you guys that it's important for the entire city to absorb this. So it sounds like there's general interest in understanding more about how you plan to, like Iris said, kind of what's the goal and how are we going to get there? It sounds like the goal is to make sure that the burden of that, these facilities is spread broadly through the community. I, I'm, the thing that hung me up in all of this was the, the lack of notification, frankly, it concerned me. And I, and I'm 100% in support of placing medium, small, large facilities where we've suggested we place them. But for me, not providing notice to neighbors is, is a little bit, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. As I noted, all these other uses that we allow in the community that have similar impacts require conditional use permits. So, and the, the comp plan section you cited, the policies talks about, you know, allowing them outright in industrial zones and conditionally in commercial zones. We don't have any policy language about residential zones, so we're making a pretty significant leap from what policy we've implemented, put in our comp plan to where we're getting. And I, and I'm okay, I personally am okay with these facilities being in a single-family neighborhood, next door to me, in a multifamily neighborhood. But I think it's only fair to tell your neighbors when you're going to do something that's different from the norm. And I read the article you provided us and one of the things that struck me, you commented on was, number one, this isn't going away, four million people coming to Washington by 2040 and, or three and a half. And also that how, how split our population is. You commented on, I don't know if anybody else read that article you sent out, but you know, Rick commented on how there's really two camps on this issue. And there's the camp that sees this as like a social health issue and we need to be helping people. And there's the camp who sees this as a nuisance issue. I'm concerned that if we don't notify people, that camp is going to be energized in opposition to this kind of thing because they're going to see it as a workaround. And if we notify people, it might be more of like a transparent, engaging tone. That's just my, my thought process on this, you know, if, if, I, I went through my head in some examples and, you know, you could take an apartment building that had 16 units and you could put 40 people in eight units if the units were 1,250 square feet each, which is like a reasonable three-bedroom unit. So you could take half of an apartment building and make it a shelter and not even tell the people who live in that building that that's going to occur until the, till the shelters come in. And, and maybe they could wait till the appeal period ran on that administrative permit before they do anything so that the people wouldn't find out until after their opportunity to like participate is gone. And I just think that's like a bad tone to set for when we're trying to move forward as, as a community, like collectively. I don't know about CUP because that's a pretty aggressive process. And a question I had is, is there, is there an intermediate step? Is a type two process still administrative but provides notice? Is that, would that be like an intermediate step?
Certainly, that is the step we have established. There's type one without notice, there's type one with notice. There's type two that, it just, go ahead. No, no, you've got it.
There's, sorry, there's the type one, no notice, administrative. Type two does provide notice and opportunity for comment.
But it's still administrative.
It's still administrative. What we did with short-term rentals was we added the courtesy notice for the type one. That might be what you're thinking of.
That was kind of what Lisa was getting at.
Yeah. But that's not something we would normally do with the type one.
Yeah.
Doesn't, doesn't allow for feedback, though.
I, I think the, the challenge on courtesy notice is folks get a courtesy notice and say, I want, I don't want that to happen.
Yeah.
There are other things you might want to consider. A good neighbor might have a neighborhood meeting with those immediately adjacent just to do that. That may be a way of sort of making that connection and disclosure, but also having it more interactive than just reading a piece of paper. I don't know, I don't want to add cumbersome burdens, but I do think that might be a good way of introducing the new, the use into the neighborhood that would be more compatible.
Yeah, I, that's, that's an interesting idea. I think we should have a uniform process for all of them because I feel like it's discriminatory against people living in apartments to say, we need to protect single-family people with a separate process that's more rigorous. But if you live in an apartment, it's okay for us to put this facility in your building without, with a different, like easier process. So for me, residential, multi-residential, single, it's all housing for people and you're going to have a new neighbor or 10 or 20 or 40 new neighbors that are different types of people who, as everyone here who's spoken has acknowledged, are like people with special needs populations, mental health issues, drug addiction recovery, you know, kids. I just feel like we should be treating people living in apartments the same as we are people living in single-family homes when it comes to the permit process. And for me, I, I settle on some kind of notice. And I want to start that, I know it's not a conversation starter, but to me, that's like one of the big things we need to give direction to them on is where, how we as a body feel about that particular issue. Iris had a hand up and then we'll go to Phyllis and Lisa.
Are you saying that we should not discuss, that we shouldn't discuss it now?
I think we should discuss it right now. And to me, other than this dispersion topic, it's one of the few things that every single person here commented on as I was listening to the commentary.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's two reasons that have continued to stick out to me in terms of being opposed to any, it going into the permit process that there would need to be any notification. One of those is that I think it perpetuates a more pejorative, negative view of this type of housing. And secondly, having worked in the nonprofit sector in this community for a number of years, as a nonprofit, you depend on neighbors in the community to support your work. And it's in your best interest to have positive relationships with your neighbors. And therefore, most of anyone that would open a facility like this, it's in their interest, they're going to create that, I think we can rely on and depend on the fact that, and trust that our, our nonprofit service providers community are going to do everything that they can to create those positive relationships. And I think that putting that, placing that into the permitting process creates an unnecessary burden and, in a way puts, makes it look like we don't trust them to do that. And I think that we should. And then the second, the other reason is that I think what Rick was starting to bring up, and I read a quote somewhere this week that said, we need to, was talking about needing to separate the legitimate neighborhood concerns from the NIMBYism, I think particularly, probably from that sort of group, that group that you discussed in your letter. And I think when you open up for public comment, I believe in transparency and I believe the public should have input in this issue that impacts all of us and that is a part of all of our lives, you also run the risk of bringing out a vitriolic NIMBYism that is confusing and slowing down our process at addressing this problem. And I think we should avoid that and keep our, these conversations within the community. And I think if they're brought without, if they're brought in more of a positive way by the nonprofits themselves and by the organizations of their own volition, not, we're here because we have to notify you and get your feedback, then it's going to be a more positive conversation in the first place and a more productive and collaborative approach.
Thank you. Phyllis?
Well, you might don't understand that the density or the number of people within the same building could increase under this use as opposed to a facility now where you limit number of tenants per bedroom and so on that the, the city is suggesting. So this would be, I think the community would respond more negatively if they saw this as a way of increasing density in their neighborhood. The same building can now be occupied by 10 instead of four or three.
So as Sammy noted before, there's a HUD standard that talks about the number of individuals per bedroom that would apply. But this would allow for more people than would be allowed by, for example, our family definition. But then again, we think it's one, are, are you talking in the multifamily or in the single-family?
Anywhere, if, if any.
We'll start with the single-family, then we'll talk about the multifamily and the issues there. Yes, there is a potential we would have more individuals there, but we do have something analogous, that's like our group homes that allow up to 10 individuals to live in a single-family home. And we do have a higher bar in terms of requirements. We have to have a management plan, we have to have a fairly good assurance that it could be done. And we're saying that's an exception to what we'd normally would consider the family role because of the efficacy and need. In the multifamily, just to note, we did have some suggestions in terms of limitations that you couldn't just cherry pick units and say, those units are theirs, so it would be dissimilar. You had to have a whole floor or a whole building or a whole section of something to do because it needs to be more homogeneous and it would be disruptive in a sense to have suddenly more folks next door to you where it just doesn't work in closer quarters because of the nature of it. The difference would be is that you might see strangers walking on the street you haven't seen before, but you're disconcerted when you see them in the hallway of your apartment building. You know, you want to see familiar faces there generally. So we think that's one of the reasons we, we were looking at that sort of having them grouped together, having them whole floors, sections of buildings or whole buildings as opposed to being dispersed throughout the building itself. And, and that seems to make sense for operations too, I would imagine for an agency, just in terms of efficiencies to make that work.
And the 250 square feet for the multifamily, we checked with the, our building official and that's on par with the maximum occupancy in the building code.
Lisa, then Steve.
Just to comment, I did like that detail because it, it made sense because I agree with you that if it was checkerboard throughout a floor and different people are in the hallway, you do like to have a sense of who your neighbors are. But I, I do kind of disagree as far as the reason for notification. I'm a process person and I like to be able to look at something and have a sense of predictability of what my expectations are. And so when you're going through with a plan, if you know that there is a notification or a community meeting or a letter, whatever the requirement is, you know, these are the steps that I need to take in order to fulfill the, the management plan and the application and everything. And there will be a lot of people who, and agencies who will want to be good neighbors and they'll want to do the, you know, the outreach and inform people and, but there's a possibility that someone won't. But as a resident in a community, I would like to know, you know, if I'm listening right now and I'm like, well, how is this going to impact my, you know, my central community or the house next to me or the apartment complex I live in or the business or anything, I would like to know, okay, at least I'm going to know that this kind of facility or residential complex or housing type is going to be next door to me. I'm going to know that I'm, I will have contact information. So I think having that assurity helps lessen some of the anxiety about the unknown of what could happen. And so for someone who's very oriented to a fair and equitable process that we can expect of all people pursuing, expanding these housing opportunities, I, I just think it's needed. And I don't want to create a situation that it becomes an undue barrier. I just want to make sure that residents have the, and business owners and everybody else who this could have a direct impact on, has a sense of assurity, they're going to know in advance and that they have been part of the communication process. Because it's only going to take one or two bad situations where something popped up next door and you have a negative, you know, experience and you didn't know about it and you, you know, you talk about how that, you know, that's going to be the issue and the fear of that. But when we can assure the community that there, there will be a notice, then at least there's that comfort that there won't be a surprise for them. I just think it's important.
Steve?
I strongly support notification, transparency from the city on this issue. But my question is, what do you do with the feedback? And you notify the neighbors, say, in a single zone. Does two thumbs down negate the permit? Are you going to have that published? How are you going to, what are you going to do with the feedback from the notification that you send out?
So I'm not a proponent of, in these smallest facilities in residential areas of, of having notification. I would consider, and I think a good addition perhaps, advocating for an immediate neighbor meeting because I think that's really to, gets to your end. And I do think we choose our neighborhoods, but we don't choose our neighbors, quite frankly. They move in, they move out. That's a risk we all have. We have to say, are, with the provisions we've described in both the handbook, you've, you'll see more of, of course, and in the concept of the ordinance, are we assuring that the risk of, of impact to someone there is roughly the same as what a single-family home would have by somebody moving in? That's really the question. I do like the idea of perhaps requiring a meeting. Not that it has a regulatory intent, that folks could all vote and say, you can't come here because that's just not the case. But to establish a relationship face-to-face between the organization that's managing a facility and the neighbors so they're aware, they have contacts, they understand, questions are answered, that might be something to consider. We don't do that now. We do a neighborhood meeting before a project, but we don't do it for specifically. But it could be something that, and I'd ask the providers too, that might be something to be doing anyway.
Thank you. Mike?
I think, you know, hearing what Oliver was getting to, there's, there's a need for awareness on whether that's the, the neighbor meeting. But I, I don't think we want to create a situation where people are being led to believe that they have the ability to shut it down.
I agree.
With, and sometimes, sometimes the notices can sort of imply that even if it's not, you know, allowing for that directly. You know, we want to see these solutions in our city. We, you know, do you send everyone a notice that's saying, this, this is being, this project's being stopped, therefore you're going to see all these other impacts? There, there are impacts to not doing these projects that appear all over in our neighborhoods. And, you know, individuals shouldn't be able, you know, an individual shouldn't have veto power over something that's a community benefit even though it might be closest to them in that individual, specific instance. So if there's some way to, to accommodate awareness and, you know, I, these nonprofits are generally nonprofits that are going to be running these have so many barriers to getting off the ground, mostly funding. The, I'm trying to get the perspective in my head of the, the city permitting process should be a checklist part of getting this project going, but really the burden is getting the funding going. And that's going to be, that's very difficult. From my understanding of, of nonprofit sector, you're talking about a patchwork of donors, institutional donors, private donors, city, federal funding funneling on down. And all of those come attached with their own set of rules. Those can be in conflict. And if those run into conflict, you know, we've talked tonight about a bunch of legitimate issues, sort of hypotheticals of, well, if you have this kind of bedroom and a kid across the hall, and there's all these different things we can come up with. But really, for these to in practice happen, often those donor funds are attached with their own sets of rules that cover a lot of this. And whether it's HUD, whether it's federal, private has their own as well. Like we, we should keep in mind that we don't want to create another cross-section of overlapping rules that have to be interpreted to, to snake through and accommodate all of them and not make it too tricky.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I don't want my comment to be misconstrued about creating burden or process at all. It's about transparency and, and yeah, good, good neighborliness. And I agree that most of these operations are probably doing that, which in my mind is a reason why would we, why would anyone be scared? If, if the vast majority of these organizations are already trying to be good neighbors and proactively engaging with their neighbors, they shouldn't be intimidated by being asked to engage with their neighbors. They should be like, no big deal, we're already doing that. And it protects us from those. And it protects us from those bad actors who might not. So, yeah, this is not about creating barriers to, for me, it's about just making sure that we're being transparent and open and sharing. And I don't think it's pejorative to suggest to someone that you have to notify people if you're doing something that's not consistent with the underlying zoning. We already do that for all these other uses, and nobody, if you want to open a restaurant or a home office, or a daycare in a neighborhood, you have to go through these processes and tell your neighbors what you're doing, and nobody says, oh, those terrible daycares, you know? I don't think, that, there's a risk of that, but if it's done correctly and the message is delivered correctly, that this is about engagement, then, you know, the positive voices should drown out those people. And those people who step to the plate and speak negatively are going to look silly in our community, because I think the majority is in support of this. So, you know, we're in democracy, if you don't like what someone says, we should still give them the opportunity to say it. And then, and then you make a decision about how valid that comment is. Real quick, Garrett, did you want to comment on that? Because you raised your, or, and then Iris?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify when we're talking about permits, because most of what I'm hearing is talking about noticing and community engagement. The type of permits are different. A type-one permit is not appealable, correct? A type-two permit is appealable.
Any administrative decisions are appealable.
So they're both appealable?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you'd have to show an error of fact or law to prevail on an appeal.
And I think a conditional use is a high burden that I'm not suggesting we place. The neighborhood meeting idea is an interesting idea, in my opinion, to address the actual underlying concern that, at least I'm speaking about, which is that, getting out there ahead of it with your neighbors. But Iris, go ahead, and then Samia, sorry.
I would just counter, just to what you were saying, comparing to childcares, in that a childcare, a restaurant, a B&amp;B, our commercial enterprises, this is a house, a residential space, and so it is your neighbors living there, and it's, I think, different in that way. And then I would also say that I, and I'd love to just hear from you if this doesn't sound correct, to me, just reading about the pieces that go into that more restrictive permit process versus a neighborhood meeting, feels like more of an adversarial, I wasn't saying that it was a burden, it just, to me, creates more of an adversarial nature. It's saying, this is going to impact you, we think that it might impact you so much that you might have concerns about it, so we're going to have to create this structured process for you to come and share those concerns, versus a neighborhood meeting, this is happening in our neighborhood, it's going to, it's part of this, these common goals that we share as a community. We'd love to hear your input, we're going to have a community conversation. Recently, the Dispute Resolution Center facilitated a conversation with the New Twin Sisters Brewery in the Sunnyland neighborhood, and I think that type of process and that type of neighborhood meeting feels a lot less adversarial to me than a put into the permit rule of something that you have to do, when, like I said, I think most nonprofits would do so anyway, and maybe be able to do so in a more creative manner.
That's, I mean, it's a good point, and maybe that, that meeting is the right kind of engagement. Interestingly enough, that Twin Sisters is a use that's permitted, and one of the issues in the community is that it went in without anybody knowing what was going in, and then everybody flipped out because they weren't notified, and then there was, then they had to go to that mediation with the neighborhood effectively. And if, if those people had found out in advance during the permit process, they might have been less adversarial. There's multiple ways to look at, you can, you can play this both ways. I think what we're all getting at, or most of us are, at least, is some kind of engagement, whether it's in a soft format in a neighborhood meeting, or through a notification, something that lets the people know what's going on. Lisa and Garrett?
And I'm not necessarily suggesting, suggesting that it has to be an entire neighborhood meeting for the ten or less, but it is a different use in a single-family home, because you can have up to ten residents. And we haven't defined or redefined boarding house, or what constitutes families. So currently, what's on the books is three unrelated people in a single-family dwelling. So we are making that change, and I think there's a courtesy to let the adjacent neighbors know that there is a change of use for the house next to them, or the apartment, or whatever the living facility is. And I think it's just, you know, using the example of the brewery, is that if people would have known this is what's happening before, this is what we're going to be doing, and we're going to be doing music, and this is our parking, and all these other things, they could have come forward and say, hey, I live right next door to here, I have small children, how late are you playing music again on weeknights, what kind of sound deadening do you have? They could have brought up certain concerns that may have been mitigated early on, like, oh, wow, I didn't think about that, that's a great suggestion, and maybe we can do this to help with that, and then maybe it wouldn't have blown up as much as it did, because it was a permitted use. So, I mean, we can kind of bat that around, I'm not saying, let's create such a barrier that makes it impossible for some of these things to happen, but to me, it's just, it's courteous to inform your neighbors. And I just want to make sure there's a guarantee that would happen. Because if we don't put it in on the books, then there's the possibility it doesn't happen. And then that's where you start having the possibility of heightened conflict, where you have to bring mediators in afterwards. And I don't care how good the mediators are, people still have a bad taste in their mouth after having to pitch up to bring in that type of level of solution. I just want to try to avoid as much of the bad feelings and potentially, you know, it's hard to have things happen in Bellingham, and that's because we've had situations that we've had to deal with. And so, if, yes, we have to mitigate the possibility to limit some bad feelings, to ensure that the public going forward has trust in the city, and with planning and decisions being made, that we have their best interests, then we need to work on making sure those things are mitigated within the plan. And maybe thirty years from now, when everything's really happy, and nobody can look back and cite the lack of enforcement, or these other issues that have happened, and all new generations come through and everything's happy, then maybe the next thirty years from now, planning commission won't have to say, can we make mandatory adjacent neighborhood notice? Because we won't have to think of the possibilities of people being upset by the decision-making.
Garrett?
Well, I guess, with the noticing, and I agree, noticing is a good idea, people should know what's going on. My question is, how do you, how do you do that, and how do you have that discussion if you're not taking any of the feedback and implementing it? If it really bears no weight? So I could tell you this thing that's going to happen, and you can speak your opinion, but if it doesn't have any bearing on any sort of design standard, or any sort of impacts that might be real to you, why are we doing it?
That's the difference between a neighborhood meeting approach and a notice approach as a part of a permit. If you have a neighborhood meeting, you tell everybody, you're telling them we're doing this, thanks for coming and learning about it, but there's no, if, if there's a formal comment, again, I don't know, I don't even know the answer, I'm just saying this is something I think we should, if you're coming back, my opinion is we should think about it, but if you have a permit notification, then that comment goes in, and then the people we trust to administer our codes, staff, gets to look at those comments and go, do these warrant conditions? You know, is there a daycare next door to this that's already operating in this neighborhood, and do we need to consider special conditions because we're housing people with mental health issues or behavioral issues?
I guess that's my question, is that the difference?
Yeah, I don't know the answer, but that, right?
Between a type-one and a type-two permit?
Well, I think it's an expectation we set. I think that, quite frankly, Twin Sisters is not a very good example. That's an industrial use, no one would dispute, I could do industrial uses in light industrial zones, I could be outside grinding all night till ten o'clock, and that's a light industrial use. And I wouldn't need to ask permission for someone across the street to do it. And they've been very accommodating, just to finish that story, that is a business that's trying to find the best middle ground with the neighbors. In terms of notice being provided, there is an expectation, when you provide notice, that your comments will be considered in the project going forward. And all we could do is provide those comments unless they point out some standard that's not met. That's part of the approval criterion to the, to the operator, and say, these are concerns that were raised. Again, I think getting the operator to meet with the neighborhood is really the answer, because they have the ability that we don't have, they could agree to things we can't compel. They might provide greater clarity on who's, who's using this building. And it could be something that's required as part of an application process. You're going to hold a neighborhood meeting, and we'll give you the notice of who should be noticed, probably a block round, or something like that. The purpose of the meeting is to explain your proposal, and talk about your organization and the things you'll do, answer questions. If the city needs to attend, we'll attend. But my sense is, we need to be invested in the solution, and I agree, folks should find out in the best way, not through social media. And that question should be answered.
And to Mike's, we do neighborhood meetings for other kinds of processes, I've sat in them where people come and say, how do we stop this from happening? That's a comment we get a lot. How do we stop this project from happening? And the staffer usually says, we don't. This project is consistent with the regulations we've adopted, and we're interested in hearing your feedback, so we could, you know, take that into consideration, but it's easy, if we establish a process that allows these, and you go into that kind of situation, it's easy to say, sorry. The people who just want it not to happen, you can say, sorry, right? I mean...
Well, last evening, I was at MNC, and the issue did come out from one of the neighborhoods that they felt we were unresponsive to the comments that were submitted about a proposal. The proposal was one where the comments were not germane to any approval criteria, they basically said, we don't like this proposal. And it's hard for us to respond to that, so they felt we were unresponsive. They were saying, you're not listening to us. No, we heard you loud and clear, but these are the criteria that we work with, constrained by law. And if you feel we're not, we're checking a box that shouldn't be checked, tell us, otherwise, we need to approve this.
Carlos?
Are these facilities required to pay impact fees for any, like, traffic, or any of the other, like, but normal construction?
If they were new, they might be required, we might even have a provision where they can be waived. We have a current program to waive impact fees for qualifying projects. If they're existing, there wouldn't be any contribution, wouldn't be a change in use, they're already there.
Garrett?
Yeah, I just want to understand this better on the, when it comes to appealing, because what I, what I don't want to see is a use get approved and then have an easy appeal path. So, is a type-one permit, or a type-two permit easier to appeal than a type-one, and if so, why?
All are appealable. Every administrative decision's appealable. That's the basic construct, one can always appeal it. Deferrences are rarely given to the decision-maker, other than environmental issues, that's by state law. You just have to, again, show error of fact or law. The challenge that comes up with a non-noticed application for an appeal is, you may not know it's been issued. And that's the rub. So essentially, we could issue it, you may not know it's been issued, you may not even know that an appeal period is available till after it's expired. If it's a type-two, notice is given that the decision has been rendered, and there's an appeal statutorily that's incorporated into it, appeal period.
That appeal period does have a time limit? Okay, so...
Both do, really.
Okay, I guess that's what I get at.
But it's just, you may not be aware it's out.
There's a lack of noticing, it could already expire, you have no idea.
It's only two weeks.
Fifteen days, or whatever.
Yeah, it's fourteen days.
Okay.
And I guess the sense would be, is that if we did a type-one approval and sent notice out that we did that, that this appeal period, it's tantamount to a type-two, isn't it?
Right, it would be no different than, okay, no, thank you.
I mean, I share that concern, we don't want to create an avenue for one guy who's got a lot of money in his pocket to hire a lawyer and muck up the works. How that is addressed, I don't know. If you have a neighborhood meeting up front, you're making everyone aware, as this is constructed today, with a type-one process, there is an appeal option. So any notification raises the specter of, like, opening it up. It's a tough, you know, but, using, just one sec, using the example that you're talking about, that I think the concern, I fear, is like, someone does it, it goes through, there's no notice, the neighbor finds out after it's opened, and says, why didn't I find out about this? And they said, oh, well, you could have appealed this, but you never found out about it, and then that neighbor's like, that was not a fair process, that was not transparent, and there's animosity toward that, there's immediate animosity toward that operation next door. And I think Iris is right, probably just open and friendly engagement up front is the best solution, but how do we ensure that that occurs? Not just trust that the agencies will do it, I do trust most of them, but we don't know everybody's going to do, we're going to create an easier opportunity for people to get into this service to our community, so we don't know who all is going to decide to get involved. Samia?
So, a couple things I wanted to say. There's probably about a half a dozen agencies that are, you know, sort of hanging in a sandbox in a way that would fall by. And I don't think any of them would put your mind where you guys are at all, you know, whether it's a purpose of notification, or into the code, or a management plan requiring a community meeting in a certain period of time, as part of going forward, which is a certain timeframe, all of that would be totally fine. And to caution you against additional permit processes for, especially the very slow, because any barrier, any additional barrier, no matter how small or tight that is, an extra thousand, how much it takes to process, or this extra time, is another barrier, and something that's very, very difficult to do. And these folks often, you know, are not getting paid a lot of money, have a ton of struggle to get these things, and it's, even what you might consider as a small hurdle, it becomes a very, very big problem for these folks. And that sometimes, that notice process, depending on how long it is, could find a basis of desire to discuss, which is the nature of these resources, and it's like that, in certain areas. But I really just wanted to highlight that, you know, there are just very known agencies that are doing this, and yes, it would open the door, but there are a lot of requirements, I think, that you'll start to see as this gets fleshed out, as far as, you know, working with a homeless service center, you know, being a known agency in that way, and having some capacity on the ground, and we're used to reviewing that sort of thing already.
Thank you. How do we proceed from here? I get the impression that everybody is supportive of the general framework that we're seeing here, and the, I didn't hear anybody say, implementing these, or implementing an ordinance that would allow these in residential neighborhoods, single or multi, is an idea we don't want to pursue. Is that fair for me to say that? I mean, not a single individual up here made a comment to that effect, that it's appropriate to place these facilities citywide. And we didn't talk a lot about the details, but the understanding is really that you provide some good details, but that you're going to come back with more, more, more information on how does dispersion work, fleshing all this out?
Yeah, I would say, based on the comments you've given, we would prepare a draft ordinance, we would bring it, I think we need to bring it back to you for workshop, from what I'm hearing now, because we want to see how that dispersion and those criterions go, and also to have further discussion about the actual standards that we refer to. We would move to do that in, shortly, and then we would ask you at that point to, to give us direction. We'd obviously go to public hearing and start our notice process afterwards if we resolve most of the issues.
Okay, so, I mean, please, anyone chime in, but I felt like there was two issues that generated discussion. One was this concept of dispersion, and the impression I took, and I want, and what I'm doing here is trying to get at direction to staff, the impression I took was that everybody's interested in understanding, or interested in including mechanisms for dispersion of facilities in this document, and we're all interested in how you plan on doing that. Is that fair to say? Is that direction that we can give, you know, and speak up if you disagree, that we can give to staff, is to incorporate that, and that that's something we want?
What would that look like?
Well, that's what we're asking, is what I'm getting at, is like, we're saying it's a good idea, I believe, and we're asking staff to come back and tell us what it would look like.
So the successful means would evaluate the intensity of a proposed use and its geographic location, to avoid cumulative effects of putting too much intensity in one area, not just the number of facilities, but the kind of folks who would have them, who would use them. So we're working on that right now, and we think we have a pretty good schema to bring forward. It's not been perfected fully, but we hope to bring it forward at the next meeting.
Ollie, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment on the, on the noticing, and I'd like to get the commission's feedback on, I think the smaller-scale projects, like ten or fewer, I don't think should have any noticing. And I think they should be a type-one administrative... And I think they should be a type one administrative permit, and we should reduce all barriers. Those are really small, small scale, where we should consider that. When we get into anything larger than that, some noticing, I think, should be required. I think, I think we just need to look at reducing barriers and creating opportunities. Because when you get into noticing, although the intent might just be to have a discussion, we have to make a decision as a, as a body, is it, are these uses that we think are allowable and appropriate? And if they're small enough, it's small enough in the scale, we, we might just have to get comfortable with that and not try to project exactly where it might be and what, what all the impacts might be if it's of a certain small scale. Prove the permit.
Steve?
Yeah, I totally disagree with that. I think there should be some kind of process or notification or meetings to do with that small, that small 10 or less.
I think there's a level of scale here that is worthy of discussion. I'd like to see where the rest of the commission sits on it. So maybe if we wanna provide direction to staff to look at a tiered approach for noticing, then we should do that.
I'd like to, whatever we, whatever we settle on, I think it should be uniform between the residential, single, multifamily neighborhoods. And if you're gonna say, if you're gonna go with no noticing for 10 or under in a single family, you should say no noticing for 10 or under in a multifamily.
Yeah, I agree, there shouldn't be any...
I'm not sure how I feel about overall that, that suggestion, but just generally, that's, that's where I stand on consistency. Lisa?
I don't fully agree with that. I, I, again, you know, keep going over. I don't want it to necessarily become a barrier, but I do want the transparency so that immediate neighbors are aware. If our definition of family or boarding house rules completely changed and every house could have 10 people in it by code and zoning, then no notification would be needed. But it is changing the use of a residential area from what we currently have on the books. And I think there should be some level of a courtesy notice for that.
Anybody else have thoughts on Garrett's comment?
I don't know that we're gonna answer type one, type two, you know, community meeting tonight.
I agree.
I think we've given enough feedback on the topic, and it's a topic we'll chew again the next iteration.
Yeah, and I think what, I, I agree. I was gonna suggest that because there's not consensus, maybe we could table, not table it, but continue that discussion. And, and to me, this isn't so much about the permit type because as Garrett helped us out with, understanding with his questions, they're all kind of the same from an appeal standpoint. I, I wouldn't recommend any changes in what's been proposed for permitting. So maybe we could, that, that, maybe that helps you guys move forward with drafting this with more structure, knowing that we're not really talking about the permit process so much as notification. And, and maybe you can come back with feedback for us on what you've heard, you know? This community's done it this way, that community's done it that way. This community doesn't do anything. And, and give us more information so that we can, you know, continue this discussion.
If you agree, we would draft the ordinance. We'd put in our recommendation, which is the one you received today, but we'd put a note there that this is the area you wish to discuss.
Yeah, and I think we would benefit, one sec, I think we would benefit from more feedback from staff in response to what you've heard. Because you heard a lot. Options, dots, examples, what maybe of all these things. I mean, Rick's already kind of alluded to a thought that he has about neighborhood meeting, maybe if we go that route. But not telling us what, not putting it in there, but giving us, you know, some, some framework to operate within. Iris?
I think I would benefit from hearing and appreciate if either you all were able to reach out to, or I'd be happy to reach out to a few folks as well and hearing from service providers what their experiences have been when they've gone through that process. I know Lydia Place did not too long ago. And I think maybe I'm making some assumptions from seeing that process not firsthand. And, but I'd love to hear, like Sammy was saying, how much time went into, for their staff in participating, engaging in that process? How they felt it went in terms of level of adversarial versus collaboration? And how it's impacted the relationships they have now? And so if there's, I don't know if there's other examples of non, of places that have recently gone through that process, but that would be helpful to hear a bit about.
We can reach out. Good, good comment. Steve?
Real quick, we went through that process with Lydia Place, what was it, two, three years ago?
Yeah.
Before this body. And I personally knocked on every door around their existing facility and talked to the neighbors. And all those concerns were brought back to here. And Lydia Place responded to those concerns by all those neighbors that are around them. And I believe it passed without any problem by this body to recommend to city council. So can work these things out.
Yeah, and remember, that process was more, that was like a rezone. And so that was more intense. But even a conditional use would be more intense than what we're talking about, like a public hearing in front of the hearing examiner. I don't think that's what...
And they, they actually had something more recent, I think, within the last year, year and a half, converting an old church off of Alice into a residential area. So that wasn't as, and I, I don't think that came before us, but that was a neighborhood. I don't believe it did. That was a neighborhood process. So they would have something that wasn't as developed that they could respond or share.
Yeah, it's a good request. Thanks, Mike, for the reasoned suggestion. Do you have a comment?
I had something unrelated, actually. Sammy mentioned something that made me think ahead to, you know, I think we understand why the small form intake is not done onsite. There's, there's no queuing on the sidewalk. I was thinking, you know, you mentioned coordination with the H-O-T, homeless outreach team. Like, from the client's perspective, how do you know? Like, these aren't gonna have, like, a sign on the door that's like, this is a shelter. So you're not necessarily gonna walk down the street and know this is a place that you could receive services. But i-if we're gonna be adding these in our community, how would someone with that need be able to find out? And it was like, is there, some communities kind of have like a one-stop shop where there's all these services under one roof? Is that part of our calculation here?
Yeah, so the homeless service center, that's part of the opportunity council, is, is that for our community. It's a one-stop shop. Anyone who's experiencing homelessness can go there. They're assessed for a variety of programs, assessed for their vulnerability, and tried to be placed with a good fit. Now, at any given time, there might be between 6 and 1,000, 600 and 1,000 people on that, or households even, on that waiting list for housing. And so right now, already, Lydia Place, Sun Community Services, the YWCA, Interfaith, all of the groups right now that exist in this community and provide these services already have relationships with the homeless service center. And so those relationships would continue. We require whoever does this to, to be in a relationship with, with the homeless service center. And that's how intakes and placements are made.
Okay, great. Another example you might wanna track down is the halfway house on Garden, it's a garden. They went through an expansion process a couple of years ago. I personally participated in. And now, that was a more rigorous process, it was a conditional use. But it's a population that might be viewed poorly by a segment of the pop, of our community. People coming out of incarceration. And you could ask their director for feedback on how that process went. Again, it was more rigorous, but that colors my opinion a little bit because I sat through it and it was in, like, an emotionally, it was an emotional process that was actually really, really positive. Because just to, just to give an example of where, where I'm coming from my perspective, there were people who came out and were very negative about that. And the facility was able to bring people who had gone through that program, who had reintegrated into the community, much in the way a homeless person might. And they spoke eloquently about their experiences and, like, the value of that. And at the end of the day, there was not a single person in the room who could say that that wasn't like a positive thing. And so that public engagement process actually led to, like, a really positive learning experience for everybody. And the people who were up there complaining about NIMBY-type issues looked really bad. You know, frankly, they looked bad. And, and so, you know, sometimes that's just, it colors my, why I've reacted the way I have because I've seen examples where public engagement like that actually, like, was really positive. And it, it destroyed the perception that you're concerned about. You know, the people walked out going, I, I can't believe I said what I said because now I look kind of like a fool because we showed how awesome this thing was for the community. So, you know, it's a long aside, but I think it's a great idea to start asking some of these people to get their perspective who've been through it. Okay, anybody else? Lisa?
Was there support for gaining more information about maybe some additional standards for the residential transition zones for, or looking at what kind of stand, not necessarily additional, but what would the residential transition zones in urban villages look like for a 40-bed facility with a single-family neighborhood on the other side of the street? Like, that's a concern of mine because it's supposed to be a transition where things step down and a 40-bed unit or 40-individual unit doesn't seem to be stepping down. So I'd kind of like to be able to see what areas of Bellingham that would be included.
We could take a look. I, I think the design guidelines would apply, which the form limits what could happen because they are trying to step down. And I may not be able to get 40 in that zone because of that.
And I would like more information on that, just so that we would be better informed of whether or not we want to look at that or modify or put some conditions, like certain kind of setbacks or barriers or...
You just where they're at?
Yeah, I, I just wanna know what that would look like.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look and see what would be allowed there in terms of bulk and scale. And if it, and, because that's still gonna prevail. We're not changing anything of that. And it may not, it may be a moot point in terms of being able to get that density.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for the, yeah, robust comment, discussion. This is good, this is very important, and we all, you know, kind of understand. So we're gonna come back sometime soon, Rick, with some additional feedback, right?
There is urgency on this, and we will be coming back sometime soon.
We have a busy schedule coming up. Okay, so let's close the work session topic. Thank you, everybody. And then segue into our schedule. Is this something that you've blocked out time for? I mean, we, you know, Heather's given us a good kind of schedule moving forwards up through December. But is this anticipated to be, you know, next meeting stuff or a month, two months?
I'm gonna reserve judgment right now because we might want to modify our schedule to allow everything to proceed. There's a lot there. And we're, we don't want to overwhelm you, but again, there's a sense of urgency on this. We have to see how quickly we could prepare our materials and how quickly we can get the model together to show dispersion and what that would look like.
So how do we view this? And the next meeting is October 18th.
Additionally, we do have some minor amendments that are kind of almost housekeeping. We'd like to introduce to you, it'll take five minutes. It'll be something we'd like to set a public hearing for at a future date, dealing with being able to get beer and wine at some of our existing restaurants that are in residential zones. Next door to where I live, yes. That's, that has no criteria.
You're accusing yourself of that discussion, right?
It is a community, a neighborhood request, I'm not part of that.
Gotcha. So that's, that's next, next meeting. And then anything else that we should be aware of coming up?
I, I think you're aware we have the comprehensive plan issues being introduced and being evaluated. And some are quite meaty, so you'll have a lot of discussion. For example, waterfront changes. We have other ordinances that are in queue. I, I guess the sense I have, we'll, we'll give you a fuller update next time. This was very pivotal in terms of how our schedule will be laid out. And now we'll work to fit it in and get back to you shortly.
Okay. Do you have questions, Lisa?
Yeah, this is a complication here. I hate to be on this schedule all the time, but originally, we had October 4th and the 11th was added in. Now it says the 18th is our next meeting, so I deleted the 4th and the 11th. Is that...
That's accurate. No, October 18th is your next meeting.
Okay, got it.
But don't delete anything beyond that. Because, yeah, we need to reserve all these dates beyond that for these potential items.
There's no shortage of things to fill those balance of the dates. The trouble is I can't give you the prescribed order now. We're working that out right now.
It's okay. Lisa, you had a comment?
I, basically what Phyllis did ask, because in August, we had those two dates set aside. So I'm just assuming that after the 18th, we probably should just try to set aside just about every Thursday. Getting pretty close to that kind of momentum, okay?
Yeah, okay, well, great. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Rick, Lisa. We will adjourn.